Okay, we are going to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the December fifteenth joint meeting of the Westerlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency Board of Directors and the Easterlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency Board of Directors. For the Westerlock Sub Basin GSA Board, I now call this joint special meeting to order at five oh one. Vice Chair Pereira, do you want to call your meeting to order at this time?
Yes, I'll call it to order as well.
Great. Due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic and pursuant to Assembly Bill three six one, this meeting is being held by conference call without a physical meeting location. This meeting was noticed in accordance with the Brown Act. In addition to a physical posting of the agenda at three 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 East Canal Drive, the meeting was noticed on online and emailed to the sub basin's interested parties list. This joint meeting is being recorded and will be posted online. The board of sec- the board secretaries are taking minutes as well. Materials are all available online at turlockgroundwater.org. The GSA's encourage public participation during the special meeting. We'll receive public comment during the public comment period portion of the agenda and during specific items. Feel free and use the raise hand feature in the Zoom platform if you like, or press star nine on your phone if you're calling in. Separate from tonight's public comment period, the GSA boards will be taking up the Turlock Sub Basin's GSP response to comment process. A presentation and facilitated discussion on the public comments received to date regarding the draft GSP and the process for formally responding to the public comments will be had during Agenda Item G three. During this presentation, members of the public will have an opportunity to provide additional comments on the draft GSP. No board action will be taken on specific items. And I remind you, a public hearing and potential adoption regarding the final GSP is scheduled for January sixth, twenty twenty two. Before I jump into roll call, just again, remember if you've got your microphone on, double check it. Make sure it's muted unless you plan to speak. That way we can keep things rolling. So with that, I will move to item B, roll call of board members. Let's do a roll call. Ms. Land, can you please call roll for the Westerlock Sub Basin GSA?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Director Alvarez.
Here.
Director Buck.
Present.
Director Chiesa.
Here.
Director Espinoza. Alternate Director Pereira.
Present.
Director Larson.
Present.
Director Lopez. Alternate Director Silveira. Director Maldonado.
Present.
Director Odom.
Here.
And Vice Chair Jerritzma.
Here.
Thank you, Vice Chair. At this time, we do have the agency representatives needed for a quorum for the Westerlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Johnson. Yes, Ms. Johnson, would you please call the role for the Easterlock Sub Basin GSA?
Director Pereira, it's actually going to be Ms. Phillips this evening doing our roll call and voting.
Okay.
Julianne Phillips.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Good evening all. Vice Chair Pereira.
Present.
Director Chiesa.
Wall Ward is here for Director Chiesa as alternate.
Thank you all. Director Yatsuya.
Here.
All right, and I, do we have Director Beeman? Do we have Director Elton? That is okay. We have three members present and we have a quorum.
Thank you.
Perfect. With that, we'll jump into item C, public comment period. Interested parties in the audience are welcome to introduce any topic within the agency's jurisdiction. No action may be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except that the boards may briefly respond to the comments, refer the matter to staff, or request it be placed on a future agenda. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to, and actually I'm going to stop myself right there. Is there anyone in the public that wants to go on record with their attendance? If so, go ahead and let's do this before we get to the public comment.
Rhett Calkins is in attendance.
Hey Rhett, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I've read the public comment spiel, so we'll just get to, if there is anyone who wishes to comment on an item not listed on the agenda, let's go ahead and take those right now. Last call. Okay, we'll move on to item D, staff updates. Joint tech update from Michael Cook.
Michael. Yes, evening, Vice Chair Jerritzma, Vice Chair Pereira. Although we haven't adopted the groundwater sustainability plan yet, we're working to move quickly on implementation. And one of the first items of business will be the development of a programmatic environmental impact report, or P E I R, prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, which is often goes by the acronym of CEQA. The purpose of the E I R is to look at the environmental impacts of implementing the projects and management actions included in the sustainability plan. And the goal is with a programmatic E I R to allow us to simplify and streamline in cases the implementation program as we develop projects and management actions to implement the GSP and get us towards sustainability over that twenty year period. So the first step in the CEQA process is what's known as a notice of preparation. That's we have to notify the public that they have, that we are preparing an environmental impact report. And over that thirty day comment period, to get us their comments to help us what's called scope or develop kind of a bookends for what we're going to look at through the environmental impact report process. So our plan right now is to release that notice of preparation on January seventh of next year, twenty twenty two, and the comment period will end on February eighth, twenty twenty two. We also plan to have a scoping meeting on January twenty fourth, and that will be via Zoom to maximize public participation. And again, the CEQA process is very open and public. This won't be the only time people get to comment, but it will allow us to kind of pursue a certain direction early on as we prepare the environmental impact report. So that's my update from the Joint Technical Advisory Committee.
Great. Any questions for Michael at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent cali- calendar, excuse me. Information concerning the consent calendar items has been included with the agenda packet. All items listed below will be actified by acted upon by one single roll call vote of the board. There will be no individual discussion of these items unless a member of the board has questions concerning an item or items, at which time those will be removed for separate consideration by the board. Any questions on the consent calendar? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve the consent, Chiesa.
Second motion.
I've got a motion to approve Chiesa and a second by Buck. Any further comment or questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vice Chair Jerritzma, if you're okay for the sake that we do have a resolution action and within the consent calendar, I will go ahead and call roll for the combined actions of consent calendar items, one, two, and three.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Director Alvarez.
Aye.
Director Buck.
Aye.
Director Chiesa.
Aye.
Director Larson.
Aye.
Director Maldonado. Director Odom.
Yes.
Alternate Director Pereira.
Aye.
Vice Chair Jerritzma.
Aye.
And I also see that Chair Alamo has joined us.
Aye, as well, but if Curtis could continue, that'd be great.
You betcha, bud.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Okay, so we'll move to item F, which is the consent calendar, calendar recommended actions by the Easterlock Sub Basin GSA. Information concerning the consent calendar items have been included within the agenda packet. All items listed below will be acted upon by a single roll call vote of the Easterlock Sub Basin GSA Board. There will be no individual discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public has questions concerning an item, at which time the item will be removed for separate consideration by the board. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's a motion.
Wall Ward, motion for approval.
Initiate through your second.
Okay, it has been moved seconded to approve the consent calendar. Ms. Phillips, would you please call the roll?
Vice Chair Pereira.
Yes.
Director Chiesa.
Wall Ward, yes.
Sorry, point of clarification, why be asking for Director Chiesa for alternate Director Ward?
For alternate Director Ward.
Thank you. And Director Yatsuya?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to item G, agenda items. Number one, implementation and support activities. I think this goes back to you again, Michael.
Let me show my screen here. Yes, come on, I had to wait for about an hour. Can you see my screen?
We can see your screen. And again, folks, let's make sure your microphone's muted if you're not presenting, please.
Okay, so this is regarding the implementation support activities and the schedule and cost for implementing those through the development of the groundwater sustainability plan. So at your last meeting, we talked a lot about projects and management actions. Those are some of the physical projects that the GSA is planning to do, as well as some of the more technical management actions we plan to do over the twenty year period to get us to sustainability. But on top of that, there's kind of a number of day to day things we have to do to support the activities of the GSA's and also support the implementation of the GSPs. I'm going to cover those right now, the types of activities, the timeframe and the potential costs, just so members of both boards understand what's confronting us as we move forward in the development of the GSP. So this is table nine point two from the GSP. And on the left hand side in blue there, you see the eleven implementation support activities. Your technical advisory committee has identified that need to be taken care of. And again, this is focused on the first five years of the GSPs. You have a schedule there of years one through five. And some of the are very basic, you know, additional monitoring, reporting, continued outreach. We'll be doing that all the time, monitoring groundwater levels, preparing around your reports, conducted, continue to conduct outreach communication with the public. So those are all activities through the years. We'll also be under number two, installing additional monitoring wells, as you know. Putting the plant together at times has been challenging due to the lack of data. So years one through three, we plan to install more monitoring wells and then conduct additional investigations as needed. And then item number three, the plans.
Right home, period.
Groundwater accounting framework.
Getting well, question mark.
And that will be in the first two years of the plan. And then we go to implementation starting year three. Item number four is potential adaptive management. If we do have to go towards demand management, the goal is to do that in kind of an interactive or iterative process, where we continue to look at programs, look at the data, and figure out what that program needs to look like. And also implement a domestic well mitigation program to look at potential impacts of drinking water wells and how we can mitigate the impacts to those wells if there are any impacts. Number five, developing a plan in case we do exceed a minimum threshold and figure a way forward to get back to sustainability. Then number six, refine the model, develop a data management system. Oops, improve our coordination and management. And then item number nine, interesting, developing some type of well registration program. As you know, you can't, you can't manage what you can't measure. So getting more information from, from well owners, starting with a voluntary program, perhaps expanding that program, implementing that over time. And number ten, developing various financing strategies, seeking to get grant funding. We're very fortunate in this first few years of these, these agencies and developing our plan and obtaining grant funds. And we will continue to do that. And then we'll include in item number eleven, we'll put our various GSP projects in the statewide portal that allows us to simply, more simply apply for grant funding. So those are the activities we're looking at, the first five years of the, of the life of the GSP. So those, those are great actions, but there is a cost to that, and we'll direct us to understand that. Probably three main areas. So we talked about the implementation support activities. We also need to administer our sustainability agencies. I'll talk about that more in a little bit. And also the projects and management programs you've looked at in the past. So implementation support activities, we estimate initial one and a half to two million dollars to have one time costs. So we have to do a five year GSP update. We have to design new wells. We have to update the model. The potential for pumping management on the east side, there's a one time cost projected in that price range. And then your annual costs of various things like the outreach and the data monitoring, that type of thing, three hundred and thirty to five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars per year. So total cost of the first five years of the plan of about three to five million dollars. So again, quite a commitment, and this is just for the implementation support activities. And then we have to keep our both agencies going and administer the plan we got. It's estimated that those costs to be at a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year. So that's, you know, legal counsel for the Easterlock. They fund the administrator separately through a contract. On the Westerlock, most of the staffing is kind of a donation of time for the participating agencies. But in dollar terms, this is kind of the commitment of staff to the GSA and GSP. And as we spoke about last time, just more vaguely, the various projects and management programs cost thousands of dollars to millions of dollars depending on the type of project and program. So as we move forward, so the, the boards to recognize the effort ahead of us and the commitment from the agencies over time. I think the most important thing to emphasize, and it's in my staff report, that your staff and your technical advisory committees are always working hard to make sure that we maximize grant funding wherever we can. Again, this is, these are big hits for some smaller agencies. We have cautionary agreements, et cetera. Again, wherever those grant dollars are available, your staff will be looking to maximize those where, wherever possible. So that's, that's the comments from me. I know my teachers here from East Rock, and if Mike, you want to add anything, any gaps?
I think you covered everything really well. You know, I would just add that for perspective that the purpose of this budget, which is required by Sigma to be included in every GSP, is to demonstrate that we understand what the GSP is committing the GSA's to and that we have the means to, to implement it. It does not hold us to a particular budget. Actual items could be more or less than the budget that's indicated here. So it will be an input and a guidepost to us as we plan, but we'll have to go through our individual budgeting processes to, you know, to work out implementation on a year to year basis.
Thank you, Mike. So that, Chair Pereira, Chair Jerritzma, happy to answer any questions from the board or from the public.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the report. At this time, any questions from the board members or from the, the West Side Board to Mr. Cook or Mr. Titi?
This is Director Odom. Will we be able to get some type of breakdown for our annual budgets for individual agencies sometime in the near future for these figures?
Yes, Director, and that is the plan. I did provide this draft outline to Mr. Clipper earlier in the week, and he will to run that through the caution formula to look at what the potential costs are on a per agency basis.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions from board members?
Any questions from the Easterlock Board? Nope, looks like we're good, Curtis.
Okay, any questions out there from our public in attendance? I don't see any hands raised either. So with that, I will entertain a motion on the West Side.
He has a motion.
I've got a first from Vito.
Second, Director Buck.
I got a second by Director Buck. Any additional comments, questions? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move to the Easterlock Sub Basin GSA. Is there a motion to approve the implementation and supportive activities?
I will move this directly onto, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Wall Ward, second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, Ms. Phillips, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Vice Chair Pereira.
Aye.
Director Ward.
Yes.
And Director Yatsuya.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Vice Chair Jerritzma.
Great. We'll move on to item number two, accounting mechanism for water supplies within the sub basin. Valerie.
Sure, thanks Valerie Kincaid, Council for Westerlock Sub Basin GSA. And there's a memo in your packet on this item, but I'll provide a little bit of background and summary for the Westerlock folks. Last board meeting, the board adopted and approved an amendment to the memorandum of agreement that did a couple of things. One thing is it committed to developing and submitting one GSP, one plan to DWR. But with the commitment that both GSA's would work on an accounting framework and resolve the GSA level accounting issues that were outstanding right after the adoption and submittal of the GSP. So in that amendment, one of the things it called for was to include in the GSA an implementation component that that, that has a timeline included in it. So you'll see, and, and I know Michael Cook just went over the ISAs really quickly, but ISA three is what we're presenting here. And specifically, it's in six month increments. So in the first six months, the council will get together and decide upon and agree upon the rules. Within one year, the GSA's will identify any outstanding information that needs to be gathered for the accounting structure. Eighteen months after the GSP submittal, the, the each GSP, GSA, excuse me, will provide their draft accounting to each other. And then twenty-four months after that time, we will resolve any differences and come up with the final accounting structure. So that's the timeline in this ISA three. Again, it kind of fulfills the requirements of the amendment to the MOA that we passed last time. And and happy to take any questions, thoughts, concerns, but that is the timeline. And again, it's included in the GSP under the implementation support activity number three.
Great. Any questions for Ms. Kincaid or Ms. Lane? Are those chat comments, questions, Herb?
Uh, no, informational. There was one looking to find the reference that Valerie, the Ms. Kincaid was mentioning, and I put a link there to it.
Great. Thank you for doing so. Okay, seeing no questions, I will entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion, Director Odom.
I've got a motion by Director Odom, a second, please.
He has a second.
Chiesa with the second, properly moved and seconded. Any additional comments, questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the East Terlock Sub Basin. Lauren, did you have anything that you would like to add?
Yeah, just a reminder that this isn't required in the GSP. So in case anybody's concerned about why it's not being put in the GSP now, we have a water budget in the GSP, which is what's required by Sigma. This is an additional step being taken by the parties to coordinate on a water accounting between the two respective GSA's in the sub basin. And other than that, everything Valerie said was correct.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. What is the pleasure of the board? Is there a motion and a second?
Wall Ward, motion for approval.
I'm sorry, Dennis, you'll see a second.
All right, thank you. Been properly moved and seconded. Were there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, Ms. Phillips, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Vice Chair Pereira.
Aye.
Sorry, Member Ward.
Yes.
And Member Yatsuya.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Great. Moving on, item number three, response to comments process. With this, I, I'm looking at my notes here. It looks like our discussion will be facilitated by Phyllis with Todd Groundwater, but I am going to introduce Marissa Perez Reyes of Stantec and let her take it from here, or Phyllis, whoever needs to take charge.
Hi, everybody. My name is Marissa Perez Reyes. Can you hear me fine?
Yes.
I'm hearing now. Okay, great. For some reason, my camera seems to be off. I'll have to investigate that later. Regardless, hi, everyone. My name is Marissa Perez Reyes, and I'm joined tonight by my colleague Lisa Butler. The two of us have been working through a facilitation support contract with DWR to be, to support the GSA staff and a variety of GSP adoption activities. One of these activities is coordinating a public comment response process. Phyllis Stanton with Todd Groundwater is here to provide an overview of this process. After Phyllis's presentation, there will be an opportunity for the joint board to ask questions, provide comments. Following the board comment period, we will receive questions and comments from the public. You may submit comments or questions at any time during the presentation using the Zoom chat feature. You may also choose to raise your hand and we'll call on you during that Q and A section. You can make your verbal comment then. I do want to note that there is a note taker here. We'll be transcribing any comments that you make. We will add them to this tool that Phyllis is about to introduce to you. Just know that your comments will be heard tonight. So, Phyllis, take it away.
Thank you so much, Marissa. I hope everyone can hear me okay and see the screen okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. It's nice to see everyone's name again. I'm Phyllis Stanton with Todd Groundwater, leading the consultant team that are putting together the groundwater sustainability plan. And tonight, I'd like to just go over a few slides describing the process that we're taking for responding to the public comments that are being submitted on the GSP. The comment period actually ends tonight, and we will be more than happy to take additional comments later in this meeting. And then I also want to just assure our stakeholders that if there are burning issues or additional comments that come in, they won't be ignored. They just may not be in there in time to modify the GSP, but we will, of course, consider them, and the GSA's want to make sure that all comments are heard. So with that, let's jump right into this. Because it's the last day of the comment period, I have modified. So with that, let's jump right into this. Because it's the last day of the comment period, I have modified this slide about four times this afternoon. We now have 13 comment letters or correspondences that we have received on the draft GSP chapters to date. We have three letters from the Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. A, a letter from the East Side Water District, and I, this is an older letter that was submitted early in the process when we were developing the water budget chapters. And I want to assure everyone that these are already being addressed. Very proactively by the, by the TAC and the Ad Hoc Committee. We have a letter from the National Marine Fisheries Service. We have two letters from Restore Hatch Hetchy, one just from Restore Hatch Hetchy, and one. Joint letter with the California Sport Fishery Protection Alliance. We have two correspondences from the Toowalini River Conservancy. We have a letter from the California Poultry Federation. And then a coalition of agencies has submitted a letter together, the Nature Conservancy, Union of Concerned Sciences. Scientists, the Audubon of California and Clean Water Action, and the Local Government Commission. In addition to all of these, uh, letters that you have listed here, we also have. Two letters that have submitted, been submitted through our stakeholders. We have a landowner in attendance tonight, Mr. Rhett Calkins. And a Turlock citizen that has been participating, Mr. Milt Treewaller. We were very pleased to get. Letters directly from our active stakeholders that have been so helpful and engaged throughout this entire process. The public comment letters and correspondences that we received, some are short and some are long. But most contain one or more sort of individual topics. And so our outreach consultant, Marissa, and her staff has. Looked at these comment letters, and as they are coming in, they are separating these out into individual comments. We're up to about 70 so far. Of these individual comments on a variety of topics. And those topics include impacts to groundwater levels, quality, and monitoring on. Domestic wells. We have some comments on interconnected surface water, especially stream flow depletions and how that might affect stream flow habitat. And request for additional mapping. We have a comment on the analysis that we conducted for the groundwater dependent ecosystems or the GDEs. We have comments on our sustainable management criteria. Primarily for three of the indicators, including chronic lowering of water levels. Degraded degradation of groundwater quality and interconnected surface water. There was a minor comment on reduction of groundwater storage and another minor comment on subsidence as well. So. We have a comment on all of our criteria that we've developed in the GSP. We have comments on the land use policies, how the GSAs are going to coordinate with land use agencies. And in particular, how future development might affect overdraft. We have a couple of comments on our climate change analysis. And some comments on the disadvantaged communities, especially with respect to drinking water. And the more, more recent legislation on human right to water and our outreach process associated with those topics. And then finally, a few project, I mean, a few comments on our projects, management actions, and funding. So what are we going to do with all of these comments? Well, we're going to respond to them in a very detailed process. And I want to go through the steps of that process for you now. Marissa and our outreach consulting team is going to record these comment letters and itemize comments into the working, a working matrix. We're going to take a look at that in just a second. And then because we are under the gun for the schedule, we're going to conduct a parallel process for reviewing these comments and developing responses. The technical team in particular will review the letters and identify technical comments and develop responses for those. While the ad hoc committee is visiting, also reviewing the letters and identifying policy comments and developing the responses. We've got several. Internal meetings set up whereby the technical team will resolve. The recommended responses with the ad hoc committee and make sure that they are reasonable with respect to the technical comments and then pull together the policy comments. And then if additions or revisions are required to the GSP, the technical team will make those as needed. We are going to document our responses in the matrix, and the final matrix will be included in the GSP appendix. Specifically, the. GSP regulations require that the process whereby the GSAs have considered these public comments be documented. So this will provide. That information in the GSP appendix, and we will have all of these 70 or so. Comments itemized with response for each. Any substantive changes or edits to the GSP are certainly going to be reviewed by the TAC over the next couple of weeks as we begin to put all of this together. If the comments are substantial, and if there's a, a lot of information and revisions that were put together, then it could be that we will. Need to get together for a meeting rather than just a lot of circulation and discussion. Via email, et cetera. And we are having a placeholder of January 4th as a date for that special TAC meeting if that's needed. So that's the overall process and we're, as you can tell, scrambling to get everything done in time for the early January meeting. I did want to show you the matrix just to give you a, some kind of an idea about what it looks like. We have it color coded for responsibilities, just to sort of help with the process. The purple. Columns are what the outreach consultant is helping us with, and that's simply logging in the information, identifying the details of the comment and. And writing out the comment in the matrix. We're going to be with the technical team in green. We're going to be providing our technical responses in that column. And then the GSAs and the ad hoc committee, the GSA representatives and the ad hoc committee will be working with the TAC to get. Additional responses in the blue column. And then we're all going to make sure that, that someone is handling the. Responses and, and appropriately with just some initials there to make sure that we're all looking at the same things. And then the process continues today, of course, is the December 15th meeting with the joint boards. You, you will be inviting and receiving additional comments on the GSP in, in just a little while here. The comment period does end today, but again, I want to assure that if there are additional comments received after that, they won't be ignored. On January 4th, that's the placeholder date that we've identified for a tax special meeting if needed, if there are a lot of responses. That we need to get as edits into the GSP. And then finally, January 6th, public hearing and adoption process. So thank you for your attention. That's generally the process that we have set up internally to make sure that the comments are considered. And responded to appropriately. I'd be glad to take any questions on. And I will turn this process back over to Marissa. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phyllis, for that wonderful presentation. We are now going to have a period to receive questions and comments from the joint board. I turn it back over to you.
Okay, with that, we will go ahead and Lloyd, I can do it on your behalf as well. That way we just hammer this all out in one, if you're okay with it.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, any comments at this time from either board, either of the board's representatives? Okay, I do not see any. I see a couple chats. Let me make sure that that does not apply to this. It does not. So I don't see any there, Marissa, so I will turn it back over to you and you can take the lead from here.
Thank you, Curtis. So at this point. If you have questions that you would like to ask regarding the comment response process or comment letters that we have received so far. Can go ahead and raise your hand or submit your question in the chat. I do want to note we had a small correction. In the chat about where we got that letter from with the. California Sport Fishing Protection Alliance that was submitted in coordination with the Toowalini River Trust. So just a small correction there. I'm checking the participants to see if anybody has their hand raised. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Let me just give it another moment here before we turn it back over. I do want to invite you, if you do have questions or comments, and we're not able to get to them now, you can always follow up. Let's see. I'm still seeing nothing. It's a quiet group tonight. I'm going to go ahead and turn it back over to you guys, I think. And I think we, oh, yeah.
Yeah, Marissa, yes, Lisa. I would, I think we would appreciate the staff would appreciate some feedback from the board, just general impressions in terms of the process. And making sure that you feel comfortable that you're getting the, that you're going to get the kind of direction that you're looking for. And so we would appreciate some feedback about that.
Are you looking for that now, Lisa, or are you talking after the fight?
Oh, no, this would be a really good time. This is, we're in the process right now of being able to do any course corrections. So if, if there's a high, you know, relatively high degree of confidence in the process and the direction we're headed, great, we'll just keep doing it. If there's a nuance or something that you'd like us all to pay attention to. That's really helpful information. Also, if there's a particular concern that you have as a, as a board member. Where a topic or something along those lines that you want to make sure we really pay attention to or, or flag in some way. That kind of information is also really helpful. That will help the, the technical team and the ad hoc committee when they're evaluating comments.
Great. I saw Vito, I saw you. Unmute yourself.
Yes, I just put it in the chat. I have a high degree of confidence. I liked the direction we're headed, so that's the feedback.
Yeah, it looks like Valerie might have her hand raised at this point too, Marissa.
Uh, yes, Valerie.
Yep, this is Valerie Kincaid, Council. And, and I just wanted to clarify that the process we're talking about are comments. On the draft GSP. And then there is a different comment period after we submit the GSP to WR. And I'm just curious if this team is going to help with that, or if we're just talking about the comments before we finalize and this board adopts.
Thank you for the question, Valerie. I can answer it. And Herb, if you have anything you'd like to add. This process pertains specifically to the comment letters that we received prior to submission of the plan to DWR. Any comments that come through the DWR comment period will be handled in a different manner.
Great, thank you.
And I'll just say that's my understanding as well.
Great.
And part of the importance of that step is that this information will be rolled up into the documentation for stakeholder. Consultation and outreach, and that will be something that DIBR will actually be evaluating when they look at the GSP. Have you talked to the public? Have you taken people's thoughts into account? So this, the more robust the comment period is, or the. Feedback that all of you give us, once again, is quite helpful. It's just going to help to validate the, kind of the. Integrity of the planning process.
Yeah, I would, I would think that. This process definitely works. You know, when you look at the list of folks that submitted to Phyllis. You know, it, it shows a wide, wide swath. I know Herb and his team has, have done a good job trying to build up stakeholder engagement over the, the. Timeframe that we've been working on this. And, and so I feel confident, like Vito said, that, you know, this is the, the right way to be doing it. I don't know if, if all the answers are in there yet, but I think we've all worked hard to, to get to this point. So I, I think the process works and appreciate the efforts of everyone.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has feedback? And we have no need, Mr. Chair, to keep you in a meeting longer than you need to be. So we're happy to return the apple.
Perfect. Then thank you all for the presentation. This information does not require a board item from either the, the West Side or the East Side. To be taken this evening. So if you have questions or comments on, on any of this up to this point. That information is always available at turlockgroundwater.org. And with that, we will go ahead and. Move to comments from the board. Any comments from the West Turlock Sub Basin Board? Seeing none, Lloyd?
Uh, are there any comments from the East Turlock Sub Basin Board? Guys been kind of quiet tonight.
Yeah, real quiet.
Yeah, uh, just before we leave, I, I want to acknowledge that Dirk Ulrich had joined the meeting. I'm not sure exactly what time, but so if we could record that into the minutes.
Thank you, Vice Chair. On of that.
All right, turn it back over to you, Curtis.
Great. If there is no other comments, I'll do one last check on the chat just to make sure that we're covered there. We've got Vito's high degree of confidence. And, and so with that, I will go ahead and call this meeting adjourned at 5:47 PM.
And I'll adjourn the East Turlock Sub Basin GSA meeting at 5:48. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.